Counselor Olson.
Here.
Bridge, Bender, Mertzick, McDonald, Hendry, Finsland.
Here.
Herrick, McKenzie, Dahlbeck, No Wiki, Seather.
I'd like to state that I will be voting on issues if they come before the council. I'd like to call on Counselor Herrick, he has a statement he'd like to make.
Thank you. I just want to mention, on behalf of the city, I would like to welcome home the 950th Clearance Company of Superior and Spooner, as well as the Forward Support Company, 724th Engineer Battalion of Hayward, under the Headquarters Company of the Battalion of Chippewa Falls, in completing their mission of Operation New Dawn. I want to thank you and your families for your support and sacrifices.[72.00][72.00](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Counselor Herrick. I'm sure we all join Counselor Herrick in his sentiments.
Item four is approval of the February 16th, 2011 Regular Council meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 5.1 is a public hearing on the City of Superior Housing and Community Development Needs and Fair Housing Choice. We don't need any action on this, just to have the public hearing.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this? I think we have one person signed up. Thank you, Reggie. State your name and address, please.
(INAUDIBLE) child, had a seven-year-old child who found the mother passed away in the bed. Please do not let this happen to another person with disability. Get more affordable, accessible housing for people with disability and low-income people. This is ridiculous. This is a country that people need housing. I know at least our government, our local city council will, are not heartless, at least they will hear me out. They're not like Scott Walker, our governor, who doesn't hear us, but at least I know, at least our city council will hear me. To hear my plea for people with disabilities, don't let another person have to die before another person with a disability get affordable, accessible housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Reggie. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Is there any other one here that wishes to speak in favor of this?
I'm speaking in favor.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to sign up. It's been a bit rushed lately. I'm Millie Ronsville, I'm the Director of Northwest Community Services, we're a community action program that provides services to about 14,000 low-income people each year, and I just wanted to provide some general comments in terms of things that we've identified as needs, and our main office is 1118 Tower Avenue. But some of the things that I want to comment on in terms of housing predominantly with the low-income population, is the age and the condition of our housing stock is commonly a barrier. We have numerous requests from low-income homeowners needing to make repairs to their housing units with lack of resources available to provide those services. And then the same thing on the rental side, landlords wanting to make improvements to their properties, but again, not having resources to do those things. Some new things that have come up is the loss of lead testing through our health department. That's been a barrier with some of our housing rehab programs, as well as some private individuals, the inability to have, to find somebody to come in and check for lead. So if you have a housing project going on, or you're concerned about your children, there isn't a mechanism where the county's able to come anymore and perform that work. Ourselves, when we've had concerns, we've had to pay a vendor out of Duluth, which has put housing costs up dramatically to get those services done. So if there's a way to address lead issues, especially the age of our housing, weatherization type issues, the utility costs are huge for a lot of our individuals. We're seeing people that are coming in and their utilities are higher than their rent amounts. So on the housing side, that's kind of what we wanted to emphasize was the needs that we have coming through our doors on a regular basis. In terms of client needs assessments, in terms of community needs, affordable housing and transportation are always the top two. So those continue to show up. I'll work with Jason on making sure he's got copies of our needs assessment, and when the city is going to be conducting theirs. But I wanted to make sure to emphasize those things are common occurrences for us. The income of people, in the last 15 months, in the City of Superior, we spent $200,000 paying on rental assistance for low-income clients. And those are people that are working and trying to make it, and sad to say, sorry, it chokes me up, sad to say we've probably turned down as many as we've helped, just because they couldn't afford the costs going forward. Our transitional housing programs are full, CASDA's programs are full, Harbor House's programs are full, but as Reggie mentioned, the lack of affordable housing is a huge barrier for people in our community. The other thing that tends to lead to some of our clients coming to us is landlord education. It is amazing for us to find out, especially, we anticipated things like this in smaller rural communities that we work in, but how many landlords in the City of Superior don't even provide a written lease to their tenants? I mean, it's impossible for me to think in this day and age, for the protection of both the tenant and the landlord, that we don't have written leases, we don't give receipts, we do fair housing training every year, and the questions that come up around reasonable accommodations, persons with companion animals versus pets, we've seen eviction notices where a landlord was evicting somebody because it became pregnant. But just keeping track of, in terms of another community need, more education on landlord-tenant issues would hopefully help prevent some of the evictions and housing conditions that we're seeing as well. So, those are just the notes I jotted down, I wanted to make sure and let people be aware of what we're seeing. Since I have a few more minutes, I can also emphasize that our food shelf is up to almost 700 households a month.
Ma'am, we're actually, we're going to make a motion to extend her time. Please continue, it's been extended by the council.
Okay, and I also want to mention, based on community needs, as long as I'm up here, our food shelves are up over 700 households a month. Those are predominantly City of Superior residents. Our tax site has been full, our average income for processing low-income tax returns has been $18,000 per household. But I just wanted to emphasize some of the other needs. Our customers increased by 5,000 people in the last year, and the numbers for this year aren't looking any better than last year. So just emphasizing the large amount of low-income individuals that we have, people that typically hadn't been in this situation, typical middle-class families that had been doting to us are now coming in for services, and the impact it's having on the nonprofit community to try to keep up with the needs of our customers. Thank you.
Thank you. Just keep order, please. We don't tolerate outbursts of clapping or applause for any of the comments that we hear. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this? Hearing none, is there anyone else to speak in favor? If you'd like to speak in favor, it's the third and final time.
Well, you guys all know me now, but Marty Curtis, 5301 East First Street. And I just want to touch on a couple of things that Millie talked about, and yes, in the city, there is general lack of funding for anything to do with the lead pain issues. It's become a problem for landlords and even for homeowners alike. And also, as Chairman of the Landlord Association in town, yes, there's a general lack of information out there available to landlords on most programs, and the classes that you can attend are rather expensive, and it's hard to get the landlords to attend, so if you can find some funding in that area, and I've talked with Millie the other day about some of the things, and as the economy gets worse, the need for her to do some of the things she's doing grows much greater. Thanks.
Thank you. That closes, unless there's another person to speak in favor or opposition, that concludes the public hearing.
Item number six is the consent agenda.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there anyone who wishes to pull any items? Not? Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes.
Item 7.1 is from Parks and Recreation Administrator Morgan recommending to purchase a concrete restroom for Billings Park from the sole bidder, Huffcut Concrete of Chippewa Falls, for $57,500.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Herrick.
Mary, could you just give me a little more information on this concrete bathroom? You might say, I'm just picturing it as a big slab of concrete coming down, and there's his and hers, so if you can elaborate a little bit more.
Yes, Counselor Herrick, the restroom is a pre-cast concrete structure that will arrive with everything in it, fixtures, windows, doors, plumbing fixtures, and so on. It will be very similar to the restroom, if you might be familiar with it, that the city manages on Barker's Island, very near to the boat launch. It's the same company that provided that one, we've been very happy with their product. It will come with programmable locking doors, which we do not currently have at Billings Park, which I think is going to alleviate a lot of discomfort at end of workday when park staff leave. We can program those doors to lock at 10:00 PM. If you want me to get more specific about the number of stalls and that sort of thing, I sure can. I'm thinking it's two bathrooms on the women's side, and a urinal and a bathroom on the men's side, and one sink each. Oh, the glamour.
Okay. Just one question, will that facility have hot water in it?
Yes, I believe it will, sir. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah, Mary, I looked at the master plan, and I see two buildings there, and I believe that, well, they're calling them relocated shelters, and I think they're numbered one and two, but it doesn't really say that those are restrooms, but which one of those, which of those locations are you going to be using?
That's, thank you for that question, Counselor McKenzie. This bathroom will be positioned where building number two is identified, and for those of you who won't remember that, you may be familiar with the playground in Billings Park proper. A little bit to the west of it, just west of the playground, we intend to establish this new restroom. It will then be about equidistant from each of our pavilions, and right adjacent to the play area, which we think is a good position for it, given the high use in the vicinity.
And then you mentioned, Mike was asking, you talked about the electronic door locks. I think there's been an issue at the Arrowhead Pier, where those were not working properly.
Yes.
Did you ever get that straightened out? And I think there was also, when I went down there and looked at them, because I heard about that problem, they also were not locking from the inside as well.
I think all of that has been resolved, Counselor. It happened very late in the year, really prior to getting really cold.
So there'll be somebody that you'll have that'll make sure that these electronic locks.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
From day one? Okay.
I believe the, some of the components at the Arrowhead Fishing Pier were replaced, not once, but twice. So we'll work very hard to make sure these are usable as soon as possible.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any further comments or questions? Mr. Hendry.
Mary, maybe you could go over what we've got out there right now, do we just have those portable potter parties in the summer, out at Billings Park there?
Counselor Hendry, we have permanent restrooms at Billings Park that are exceptionally dated, and in fact, they are not what we would consider handicap accessible, according to the ADA. In addition, we have some portable toilets placed as well. So I will, I'll be assessing whether or not we might need still the portable toilets positioned around the park a little bit, but this will be the first permanent restroom established in Billings Park that meets ADA accessibility guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Item 7.2 is Police Chief Peters is recommending approval to renew the Parking Ticket Management Services Contract with Citation Management for one year.
Motion's made and seconded. Do we have further comments or questions? Not all in favor, say aye. Counselor Herrick didn't see him, pardon me.
Yeah, I just want, Officer Jess, as far as, you know, the timeframe that we have for paying the tickets, is that something we as a city can change all the time? The reason I bring it up, because sometimes, you know, there's only like a two-week period to pay a parking ticket, I mean, I'd like to see that maybe increased to 30 days, you know, I don't know if that's something that we have the opportunity to negotiate, or is there a reason why there's only like a two-week period to pay the parking ticket rather than 30?
I think the two weeks was consistent with what it was when we took the ticket payment at our police station. It's something we'd have to look at the contract and talk to Citation Management about extending. I don't know that it can't be done, or if it can.
Okay. All right, thanks. Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah, following up on that, Chuck, I think it probably, that's a good idea what Mike brings up, because people are mailing those tickets in, and saying that, right?
They can mail them in, or go online and pay them with a MasterCard or credit card.
Sure.
Anything further? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Item 9.1, Counselor Mertzick is requesting the common council ratify status quo two-year contract extensions with the following employee unions, 244 Public Works and 235 Clarical. He is withdrawing Local 27 the Police Union and 74 the Fire Union.
Motion to approve. Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Comments or questions? Counselor Hendry.
Yeah, I wrote over, and I'm kind of wondering, I don't see that it went through a committee, and I'm kind of wondering why it wouldn't go through a Human Resources Committee. It looks a little involved there, it looks like it's, well, you're dealing with contracts, and usually, there's negotiation when you have a contract, and when the contract's over, there's negotiation for the new one. And I think that, it just hits me as something that would require some discussion, and to go through a committee and to look at different options, it's kind of done maybe a little bit too quickly here. I can make a motion for it to be referred to Human Resource Committee.
Can I, I'd like to say something on that.
I'd like to know, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second to that motion?
Second, to go to HRC.
There's a motion that made and seconded for referral to HRC. Now the point would be to speak to the motion for referral.
It was brought to my attention today that both the Fire Department and the Police Department Unions wanted to be excluded from this proposal, and so I think it's appropriate that we accommodate their request. I know Mrs. Klon mentioned that, but I don't know how, what the protocol is for pulling that from the actual council. Beyond that, I would like to talk a little bit about my intent with this proposal.
Ms. Mertzick, there's a referral motion on the floor.
Yes, and this is going to, this is going to help to explain why I believe it shouldn't go to the HRC Committee.
Okay.
Tonight, also on the agenda, there's a resolution, and it's basically condemning Governor Walker's fiscal repair bill, and supporting our working class here in Superior and throughout the state. This resolution, in my opinion, is very much necessary, and is a show of solidarity with the council here. Although resolutions, they can, you boil them down, and they're basically just lip So it's, I guess my point is that it's easy to agree or disagree with a contentious issue through a resolution, although it's a whole other thing to put actions to our words. So this proposal is intended to do just that, it's intended to put actions to our words. By ratifying these union contracts, we're taking a very necessary step to preserve the rights, and I consider them basic human rights, of our working class. I had a discussion with a few of my constituents the other day, and they questioned why collective bargaining was important to retain, and this is why. Without a legal binding document, or a contract, ethical treatment of workers can be violated by their employers. And I have an example that I refer to because it's, it hits home with me. As my colleagues know, I'm a veteran, and as a veteran, I'm protected by certain federal and state laws. An example of these laws is the Soldiers and Sailors Act. This law makes it illegal for employers to discriminate against veterans returning from war. I have no doubt that the majority of employers have high ethical standards, and would not need to be bound by these laws when it comes to fair treatment of returning veterans. Although, without these laws, veterans would have no recourse if an employer was unethical. So supervisors and employers can easily say one thing and do another if they're not bound by a contract or a law. This is one example of why we must ratify these union contracts, to preserve a legal recourse for workers to negotiate a fair contract. A few more things. Beyond that, over the last few days, it's become abundantly clear to most of us that this bill, this Walker bill, is more than just about fiscal issues. Unions have conceded to all of Walker's fiscal demands, and he still insists that of stripping the rights of our working class. He says it's necessary to accomplish his agenda. I think he's right on one count, that it is his agenda, and not the agenda of Superior. I have a few other examples of why we must act quickly to ratify these contracts, and I'm going to highlight quickly, because it's my assessment that when issues that are time-sensitive go to the HRC Committee, they can be tied up, and time is not on our side. In any case, last week, as most of you know, we sent a delegation of roughly 250 people representing different interests here in Superior, they traveled to Madison for Superior Days to discuss concerns with our governor, Scott Walker. The governor decided that it was more important for him to cater to a, well, what he thought was an ultra-rich corporate thug that doesn't even live in Wisconsin. The guy he thought he was talking to can't even vote for him, and then he doesn't talk to 250 of his own constituents that came from Superior. That's astounding to me. Additionally, well, actually, yesterday, Walker flew into the Bong Airport. I don't know how many people are aware of this, and for a brief period, I considered that maybe he was, he was attempting to make up for his absence in Madison. It turns out that I was wrong about that, and he was here to give us ultimatums and scare tactics. He wouldn't even meet with the elected officials, he wouldn't meet with our council president, and it's a municipal building, he wouldn't let our acting mayor go into the municipal building to talk to the governor. I want to point out, though, that his threats yesterday were empty threats, and this is why. The first phase of his destructive bill has yet to even pass, and what makes us think, or him think, for that matter, that his second portion that he revealed today, it'll be any easier for him to pass that. So I think that there's a lot of speculation, and I think he's a little overconfident that he's going to get exactly what he wants. And additionally, if Walker doesn't allow Superior its fair share of state revenue, he had mentioned that, well, there was talk, rather, that he would hold it against Superior, hold a grudge against Superior, and not allow us our fair share of state revenue. And what I'll say to that is, we will have to consider the legality of those actions. I'm assuming discrimination, when it comes to dividing this money equally, or appropriately, can be challenged in court. I think Superior understands that Governor Walker is intent on, this is not only my assessment, but the majority, vast majority of people I talk to, say he's intent on driving a huge wedge, even a larger wedge, that's already there, between the haves and the have-nots. And it's, again, my assessment that it's imperative that we ensure for our workers here in Superior, that they retain these basic rights, such as collective bargaining. And again, I'm going to voice caution and concern that if this goes through a lengthy committee process, we will have lost the opportunity to retain these rights. That's all I have to say for right now, thank you.
Counselor McDonald, had your light on.
My thing is, we do not have the right to speak for these unions either. They have their own rights, and they're not being able to bargain if we're passing through extending their contracts. I don't think that's up to us to make that decision. We don't know what kind of money the city has to go forward with any kind of bargaining. So I think that we need to discuss it further, and it needs to go to our HRC.
Counselor Hendry.
Yeah, maybe I should mention, since Counselor Mertzick brought up 10.3, that I am in favor of the resolution in 10.3, but I also believe that 9.1 should go to Human Resource Committee, because I think we need the chance to discuss it, we need the people that are the experts there, Kami, and to give her some time to, you know, to look at the implications of this, and that's the usual course for this kind of thing to go through, it's where all the contracts are decided, and I don't think it's good doing it quick, you know, and I don't know if the unions have agreed to go along with this or not. I don't see that in here, that it's been, you know, negotiated with them, or anything like that, and Human Resources is a place where that's generally handled.
Counselor Olson.
Are we going to allow the public to speak to this issue, even if it's a referral frog? Are they able to?
We will give them time after the counselors have made their comments, and the administrations have made their comments.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate that we have the counselors speak first.
Okay. So we're allowing counselors to speak in the house referral?
I don't believe we've had anyone sign up. We do have several people signed up for 9.1, yes.
Okay, well, then I would ask, Counselor McDonald, if this is going to be referred back to HRC, that this be referred to the March 7th HRC meeting, and returned to this council for a vote on the March 15th meeting? We've done this in the past, instead of dragging it out for a month or a month and a half. So if you'd be so kind to amend your motion, if that's okay with you?
That's okay with me, if it's okay if we can, if we have the people to have a quorum to be at that meeting. I mean, if we have the amount of people to be there, I'm fine with that.
I made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's fine with me, she seconded it.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything further, Ms. Olson? Kami, McKenzie would like to speak to us.
I received communication from both of the city's AFSP unions last Thursday and Friday to commence negotiations for 2012, 13, and 14, and I did refer those requests. They are on the March 7th HRC agenda, in closed session. The usual procedure would be to meet with HRC in closed session, because the Human Resources Committee by ordinance is the group that directs negotiations with the city's unions. I have not spoken to the unions myself at all, we have not scheduled any meetings as of this date. I believe the unions themselves just met last night, so I would, there would probably be a meeting with the unions after the March 7th HRC meeting, but it is on the agenda for March 7th.
Attorney Frel, did you have a comment you wish to make?
Well, just insofar as we're discussing the process through which something like this needs to be acted on, Counselor Hendry has appropriately identified the HR Committee as the committee that by ordinance is designed to and empowered to, in charge of the responsibility of directing collective bargaining with all of our- responsibility of directing collective bargaining with all of our labor unions. So I think it's entirely appropriate to have the matter be set on the course that Ms. Knessy has identified that being agendized with the March 7th HR Committee. Conversely, to act on something like this without paying heed to the ordinance, I think would be a flawed approach. So I think it's actually the only approach with regards to contractual matters of this nature is to process it through HRC as your start point. And then ultimately, obviously, the contracts, once they're fine-tuned and prepared to reflect the sentiment of the negotiating parties, would be brought forward to the council for final approval.
I ask Director Vito?
Excuse me. I don't know how the vote is going to go tonight. It sounds like it may be going to the HRC, and it also sounds like there may be a vote to actually pass these tonight. So I do feel, as a finance director, I do feel obligated to tell you or remind you that if you do approve these contracts tonight, you will be binding yourself to terms of which you don't know what our budget scenario will even look like.
Sorry, I have a hard time.
I have a hard time seeing your light. Counselor Merzick, go ahead.
Now, I just want to take one more opportunity here to, I guess, be a little bit redundant. Somebody had mentioned that the resolution is good, but the proposal is bad. And again, how I'm going to respond to that is, the resolution is just lip service. It's saying, "We disagree." The proposal is putting action behind the resolution and saying, "Not only is this bad, not only are we going to condemn this verbally here on the council, but we're going to take action and not allow Governor Walker to strip these rights away from our employees, our working class." And then also, I would like to point out one more time that I understand that the usual course, or the usual protocol, is for these types of things to go through the HRC Committee. There's nothing usual about what's happening right now in our state. And so I think if there's ever an appropriate time to bypass what would be considered normal or usual protocol, it would be right now. And I'm not saying that we need to have this finalized tonight, but maybe it would be appropriate to, instead of the March 7th HRC meeting, to hold a committee of a whole, is that what it's called, Ms. Klon, where the entire council is convened to discuss one specific issue? And I know other jurisdictions have done this. They've held emergency sessions. And so we could call a meeting for tomorrow evening and have all the parties involved get together tomorrow to discuss the specifics and go right to the process. Would anybody be willing to consider that as a second option as opposed to waiting to March 7th? And again, waiting to March 7th, waiting for HRC to hash out what they feel is appropriate, the turnaround on that is March 15th. By March 15th, if the bill is passed, all these efforts are in vain, and our unions lose all their rights.
Counselor Bridge?
Well, I think we'd be wise to take the advice of our city attorney here. As far as a meeting tomorrow night, I'm pretty sure we don't have enough time to properly agendize and publicly notice a meeting, to have it within one particular day. But if we have an ordinance that states that this has to go through HRC, and we pass it here tonight, and then find out we're in violence of our ordinance and what we've done has no teeth, then quite likely we've taken that away from HRC, and it even gets delayed further. So if this goes through HRC on Monday, it could be back in two weeks here for an approval. I don't see, as long as 14 senators stay in Illinois for a couple more weeks, that that's a problem. I guess that they might not.
Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, this question for Kami. Kami, does 244 Public Works and 235 Clerical, I mean, are they familiar with what's going on with the state? Or are they just basically, I mean, local unions here? Or how is that working with other state employees?
They are a union, so they would be affected by the proposed budget repair bill to abolish the bargaining.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Olson?
If I may, I want to quote the ordinance. Section 4220 of the city code puts the Human Resources Committee in charge of all city matters arising under Wisconsin statute, Chapter 111, which is employment relations in general. Also, under Section 4220, the duties and responsibilities of the Human Resource Committee includes the duty under Item 4 to direct all collective bargaining with certified bargaining units provided, which I am assuming is 244 and 235 in this instance. So, however, key word, that all agreements reached at the conclusion of such collective bargaining shall be reduced to writing and shall be submitted to the common council for approval or rejection. So if there is a proposal, and the unions are proposing this, and they are good with this, it should be put in writing and submitted to the council. Am I reading that right?
I defer to our city attorney to concur or disagree with you, but I believe you're probably right.
I'm sorry. Your question is if the unions reduce, put something in writing and refer to the council? That's how that should go? I'm not sure I understood your question, Counselor Olson.
Well, it's the ordinance. I mean, we should understand the ordinance. The way I'm understanding it is, we've got a collectively bargained unit, which is the public employees, 235 and 244. If their proposal is set in stone, and Mr. Merzick's proposal is to ratify a status quo, there are, I'm assuming again, that there are no concessions or any other language in here that would be other than to, if this is their final proposal, they should be presenting it to the council in the form of a written, the way I see this, reduced to writing and shall be submitted to the common council for approval.
Well.
And I'm just, I'm confused as to, at this point, why we wouldn't, I got the ordinance. And if there's no need to go to the HRC and delay this, because it says here that the collectively bargained unit can propose this in writing?
Well, the Human Resources Committee by ordinance and by the provision that you've just identified, is the entity, the entity that has jurisdiction, the committee that has jurisdiction to direct the bargaining process?
What is this, first?
So typically, and Kami can speak more intelligently to this than I can, of course, but typically, the Human Resources Committee would meet, as they seem to be scheduled to do next Monday, and provide staff, naturally, HR staff, with parameters that the Human Resources Committee deems most important in following and seeking in terms of folding into an actual term or terms of the collective bargaining agreement. And then staff goes about the business, and I invite Ms. Knessy to interrupt me when I'm misspeaking, but staff then goes about the business of engaging directly with union leadership to exchange a variety of proposals, verbal and ultimately getting toward a written document. That written document, though, is the document that is the result of negotiations. That's the result of the meetings between management and union leadership. Will you take this in exchange for that? You can imagine, you know how that goes as well as anyone does. So I don't know if I've answered your question, Counselor Olson. That's the process that I'm recommending not be bypassed. I've not known of any directive that's been born from a Human Resources Committee meeting in the last couple of days that has armed staff, or anyone else for that matter, with the ability to proceed with negotiating these collective bargaining agreements.
Well, I want to make a motion to allow counselors to speak.
You've spoken to the issue twice.
I would like to make a motion to allow counselors to speak more than twice.
First of all, I'd like to hear from Finance Director Vito. She has her light on before you do.
Thank you. We're talking about the process here, and there's a huge thing we're not talking about at all. The big part of the process here before this ever goes to the Human Resource Committee is the financial piece. The Human Resource Committee at this point in time does not know where we are going financially in the years 2012, 2013, and 2014. We have a process that starts early each year, and normally, we have a mayor. And the process starts with the mayor, and with council leadership, and with administration, and with citizens, as they tell counselors and our mayor what kind of services do they want. We're totally missing the financial component of this whole issue here. That starts in the spring. The mayor submits an executive budget to the council, most often in the late summer. We are required by ordinance and by statute to have a budget adopted at some point in the fall. But in no way, shape, or form has our Human Resource Committee ever taken up looking at contract settlements without knowing what our finances are.
We have a business agent of one of the unions that would like to address us at this point. I think that would be appropriate at this time. We'll consider your motion after that, sir.
My motion has been seconded.
I think it was inappropriate this time. You'd already had a second chance to speak. And if you're trying to defer something, we have a motion that takes precedence over others. The motion that takes precedence over others is a motion to refer. Your motion would be out of order at this point. So I'm deeming that this person has the right to speak now.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mattson. I know we have probably a number of speakers to get through tonight. Just remind speakers as they come to the podium that by ordinance and by council rule, we have a three-minute limit. Historically, people have had a rather easy time extending that, but I just want to let you know I'll be flailing my arms around or something at the three-minute mark, generally.
I'd like to thank the city council for hearing us out, and I would hope that you would extend my time if necessary.
Say your name, Mattson.
I'm James Mattson, Staff Representative of AFSP Council 40. I'm here on behalf officially and formally in Locals 235, the City Hall Unit, and 244 to verbally communicate to you our proposal for a two-year contract status quo. Only thing that will change will be the dates. Wages will remain the same. The contractual language will remain the same. I bring you greetings tonight from ground zero. I've been down in Madison the last two weeks. I was down there the initial week when the terror first started. I returned last week doing double duty, not only as union representative, but also for the 23rd straight year in a row, representing Superior at Superior Days. So I was doing double duty, trying to affect changes that would help northern Wisconsin. The reason I mention that is because unions are trying to work together with employers, as I have done with employers the last 20 years. These are extraordinary and emergency times. On Friday, the School District of Superior Board of Education had an emergency meeting at noon. At 6 o'clock at night, we had over 250 people at a meeting to ratify a contract. This is done quickly and done because the respect that that district showed for organized labor and that union people have a right to have contracts. This is a basic human right, a basic civil right. It's guaranteed under the UN Charter. It is not appropriate, I believe, under the circumstances that we're facing today, to delay this action. These are unusual times. We are telling you straight out what the proposals of both of these unions are. It's quite clear. If you wanted me to email you something, that could be done in the morning, but I'm telling you what it is. And for the record, you all heard it. I'll repeat it again. Two-year contract, status quo in all events, or all aspects of the contract, except changing the dates. That would be the proposal before you folks tonight. I believe that that's the intent of our unions at this time. Both unions have met in the last day, and both local presidents are here. If you wish to hear from them personally, I can assure you that we are prepared to move tonight to get this done. I think it's time to show leadership. It's time to show courage. It's time to send a message out throughout the state of Wisconsin, the nation, that we are not going to be kowtowed and brutalized by what's going on in Madison. We are there today. We're there tomorrow. We will not give up. We're going to be here one day longer than Scott Walker, and that's the way it's going to be. But what we can do here today, and that's why, one of the reasons I'm here in northern Wisconsin, is back here again, is to try to take care of business. Business tonight is 235 and 244's contracts. They need to be done. It's a solid affirmation of the rights of these people who have worked with you for years and years. This talk awaiting till Monday will be irrelevant. It doesn't matter in terms of the issues at hand. Budget issues are the budget issues. The issues are, as I stated, we are willing to do this two-year contract. If this is going to be just an excuse or a ruse to get into a whole bunch of concessionary bargaining, that is certainly a different approach to the relationship between the parties. But our desire is to work with the city and get through these difficult times, and we wish to do so with the aspect of having a two-year contract, as I stated before. I respectfully ask the city council, show courage, show leadership, show innovation, show commitment, show commitment to justice and to workers' rights, and take right action, and move this through tonight. Both our unions have authorized this action. I thank you for your time.
We have Lee Baker signed up to speak.
My name is Lee Sandok Baker. I live at 1016 Coming Avenue. I am the Secretary-Treasure of AFSP Local 235, representing clerical and technical employees here in Superior. And I'm currently the staff assistant at the city landfill. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First off, I want to say that I feel it is entirely inappropriate to shove this off to the HRC for the Monday meeting. Time is of the essence. We held emergency meetings, both 244 and 235 held emergency meetings, so that we could come to an agreement on Counselor Merzick's request to extend our contracts. The document you're looking for is the contract with extended dates. We're not alone in the effort to protect our rights in a quick fashion. On Friday, the Superior School Board and the Superior School Staff, Support Staff Employees Local 1397 agreed upon a near-status-quo contract extension. The longer 235 and 244 employees can count on having the protection of an intact contract, the longer the city can count on the proven benefits of a unionized workforce. Lower employee turnover, higher productivity, and a safer workplace, among other things. It's unfortunate that we have to deal with this so quickly, but taking a stand now and passing this now will not only reinforce the positive relationship the city has had with its employees, but it will also confirm your commitment to the ongoing quality of services within the city of Superior. If Governor Walker's bill passes, and our contracts have not been extended, you'll likely see a mass exodus of the city's most experienced employees who now feel forced to retire while their retirement benefits are still intact. It's already happening in Superior schools. The number of teachers slated to retire this summer has more than tripled since Governor Walker has revealed his true intentions. Wouldn't it be better for the city to have several years rather than months to deal with the loss of its core employees? Losing the protection of our contracts will negatively affect public services, and that will negatively affect Superior as a whole. This will impact residents' quality of life, as well as business owners' decisions to remain in or relocate in Superior. Governor Walker has laid out his two-year budget. We understand cuts are inevitable, and layoffs may happen. We understand cuts are inevitable and layoffs may happen, but we're willing to take risks to preserve the protections of our contract, which include everything from sick leave provisions to fair and orderly layoff and rehiring procedures. I, I'd just like-
Speaker.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to please ask you to continue the tradition of cooperation between the city and its employees, and stand together and do what is right. Vote to extend our contracts as soon as possible. Thank you.
Marshall Johnson signed up to speak at this time.
I reside at 2105 Ogden Avenue. I will not need my three minutes because much of what I wanted to convey has, has already been said very eloquently. I'd just like to talk about realism. I think that Counselor Mertz's proposal, from my standpoint, as somebody who teaches about the political economy of the current crisis, eminently reasonable, eminently realistic. What's not realistic is the belief that we live in ordinary times, that for instance, that we will have some certainty in the spring or at any other time about our income, so long as the discussion here is simply about how are we going to prepare for the cuts, and not about the revenues that a politically changed environment could generate. We're, we're missing the boat. These are historical times. These are emergency times, and I think they require the strong and determined stance that has been proposed here tonight. So I do hope that you support the proposal.
Did anyone else sign up to speak to this issue? Mr. Mertz, if you had a motion or comment you wish to make?
What I, what I wanted to say was covered by members of the, of our constituency here. So I'm going to pass. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Bridge?
There's a lot of support for it this year, obviously, and I think right here as well, but my only question is, if we pass this, and I mean, I read the ordinance, and it says "all" to me. I mean, that word "all" in there is pretty powerful as far as what's, is and isn't supposed to come through HRC, and, you know, that "all" means "all." So what happens if we pass it? And then we have this ordinance that we have to look back on. What are the potential challenges? As far as the, you know, not looking at the revenue side of this thing, and we know already, we found out today that we're going to lose in the neighborhood of $930,000 in shared revenue next year, so about 10% of what we normally get from the state. So we got some challenges ahead of us here.
Well, again, I, I could not, I can't recommend acting on these contracts tonight. There's no way I could, not in light of the directive by, as set forth in local law. The code is, is our local law. It's, it's cousin to state statute. It's, it's our body of, of law. It, it's not a protocol. It's not a past practice. It happens to be a longstanding, actual past practice, of course, and process that's, that's evolved over time and been repeated over time. But, but more than that, it's a directive and a, a process that's been identified carefully in the code. Can always rewrite the code, but that's not, you know, anything that's before this council this evening. Counselor Olson had asked me some moments ago, what if the union just submitted a proposal in writing that looks much like the collective bargaining agreements we've been working with for the last couple of years, and simply has a new date in it as an expiration date? I think maybe that's what you were asking me. That might very well be the document that is brought forward to the Human Resources Committee as, as the final accumulation of the negotiation process. I can't fathom that that would be how that goes, but it, it could be that document. But, but even that hasn't, hasn't been presented to the council tonight. Even a written document with no more than dates whited out and new dates imposed over those has been, has been introduced. So, so in terms of the, the procedure, the code-driven procedure, it would be an inappropriate matter to, to take action on this evening.
I haven't had the opportunity to speak, and as a counselor, I will. I do remember taking an oath that I would uphold the Constitution of the United States, the laws of the state of Wisconsin, and the ordinance of the city of Superior, or worded somehow like that. And when I swore that I would uphold those laws and ordinances, I guess that's what I meant. And I hope other people will feel the same way that I do, that we will follow the ordinances and the laws of our country and our city. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Counselor here?
Yeah, just a question. Could a, could a special counsel meeting come about within the next day or two? I mean, is that, if this document were to appear, or?
There are provisions for a special counsel meeting, but that, I don't think that has much to do with the HRC Committee meeting. We could call a special HRC Committee, too, I suppose. I hadn't considered that.
Okay, thanks.
Can I exercise my second?
Go ahead.
I guess I would really urge, who made the original motion?
To refer to the-
HRC.
I agree, definitely.
Can, can we entertain, or will you entertain, rather, rescheduling the HRC meeting? The minimum time allowed is 24 hours, correct, to release to the press? So we could, in theory, do it 20, 24 hours from, from right now, have an HRC meeting, and, and get that taken care of? And then, following that, we could immediately call for an emergency meeting, which would have to be an additional 20, 24 hours, so two days. We could condense this to two days as opposed to risking waiting till the 15th of March. Would that be, would that be a timeline you would be willing to entertain?
Did my motion have a date?
A date? No, it was-
I just made a motion to refer, I just made a motion to refer to HRC, didn't I?
That's what I understand. A regularly scheduled HRC meeting is next Monday.
But if I made a motion to refer to HRC, then whenever the council decides HRC meets, then my motion would fulfill it.
I would believe that would be up to the Chair of the HRC and probably the HRC Director to convene an HRC meeting if we can.
So whenever the HRC meets, that's, that's fine. My, my motion is to refer to HRC.
And that is the understanding of the second as well?
Yes.
And can we deserve an objection to meeting at a different time than, other than scheduled?
No, not necessarily. Just depend on a time where the people that need to be there can be there.
The members of the HRC Committee are all here, and I'm Chair, Chair of that committee.
Thursday and Friday.
Tomorrow at 7:30 might be a little late for us to all convene and accomplish much. You would think Thursday was a good time, and Friday for a council, an emergency council meeting? Is anyone in disagreement with that thought? Counselor McDonald?
Yeah.
Human Resources Director Kenesey, if we met at, what time would we suggest to have a meeting on Thursday, then?
4:00 p.m.
4:00 p.m. on Thursday? I don't see any great objection to that.
Please just second somebody else's shot there.
Yeah, go ahead. Everybody have time to? Also, McKenzie's on the committee, and- Kami, you have a comment you'd like to make?
I was just wondering if we could maybe do that a little bit earlier than 4:00?
Sure. I don't know why we wouldn't, but is there a, a proposal for a time earlier than 4:00? Would that be agreeable to the-
Like 3:00.
3:00.
It might take a little longer than an hour. We don't know how long this will run.
Can we make it in the morning? Can we save 3:00?
It might be difficult for some of the counselors to be there, if they're attending, planning on attending.
3:00.
Is that all agreeable to anyone? Kami, can you work it out at 3:00 o'clock on Thursday?
Yes.
Does anyone disagree with that? As Chair of the-
About 2:00. Hey, I got hockey to coach at.
A suggestion was made by the city clerk that perhaps we might prefer to hold that meeting in here rather than 204.
I just don't know if everyone will fit in 204.
Yeah, we might be experiencing quite a crowd, and we'd have to check and see if this room is available at that time. Can one of you do that for us? Notice, notice us by email or whatever, and get it out to the public notice. At 3:00 on Thursday, we're in either this room or in 204. And we can certainly put a note on the door and tell people where to meet.
Mr. Motion, also going to call for that special-
Okay. The referral now still is to refer to the HRC. I guess the discussion has been now when the HRC meeting should be. I guess we probably should, at least one point, decide whether or not we're going to refer to HRC before we go too much further. So if that's agreeable, the motion to refer was made by Counselor Henry and seconded by Counselor McDonald. Is there any further comment on that motion? If not, all in favor of rescheduling and having a HRC referral? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no, and motion is passed. We will refer to the HRC. Now the decision would be when to reschedule the HRC, I think is appropriate. And Thursday at 3:00 is an appropriate time?
I was just going to make a motion to say Thursday at 3:00.
I think that's up to the, that's up to the committee, actually.
Oh, okay.
I don't think that's the counselor's, council decision. That's the committee's chair's decision. That would be mine, and I certainly am in agreement with that. So 3:00 on Thursday, we will meet HRC. Is there anything further on this item on the agenda? Oh, Counselor Olson.
Is that going to be having to go into closed session then as well?
I think that depends on the decision of the committee.
Okay.
We, we may well have to come to a conclusion, but it depends on how, how, how it goes. Nothing further on this item? Anyone else? Not, we should go on?
Were you going to-
We scheduled, we scheduled the HRC meeting. Oh, now we have to schedule a council meeting. I guess that would be another.
Can we schedule, schedule an emergency council meeting Friday at, at 6:30 p.m. in the Government Center?
That might interfere with some of our plans. Then, oh, there's a fundraiser.
Well, that's all he asked for, a motion.
There's a meeting, I know several meetings have been called for Friday afternoon and evening. Does anyone have a better, another suggestion? I know that your suggestion's wrong. Counselor Bridge?
Well, I, I think it's your position to suggest a time for-
I'd like to, as a matter of convenience, like to meet earlier. If we could have a council meeting at, would 4:00 be appropriate on Friday? 4:00 Friday, we could have staff here, and then we won't be extending everybody's, interfering with people's weekends, et cetera, and other things that are planned activities. Are you all in favor of, the council would make a decision on that, and I guess as, as Council President, I can call that meeting. So I'll call a meeting for 4:00 on Friday in these chambers, if we can get them. Without objection, we'll schedule an emergency council meeting. Anyone wish to comment on that?
There's no need to call an emergency meeting.
Well, just a, a special council meeting. Okay, a special council meeting. Doesn't have to be an emergency. And those, 4:00 on Friday, those times are set? Thank you. We'll go on.
Item 10.1 is a resolution introduced by the Plan Commission, setting a public hearing April 19th at 6:30 to vacate Chestnut Street between Garfield and Washington Avenues.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there further comments or questions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, motion's passed.
10.2 is a resolution introduced by the Public Works Department, supporting a grant application to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources under the Aquatic Evasion Species Control Grant Program.
Motion's made and seconded to approve. Anyone, all in favors, motion made and seconded. Anyone wish to comment? Excuse me, I'm getting, handling myself. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Item 10.3 is a resolution introduced by the Common Council of the City of Superior, opposing provisions of the Budget Repair Bill proposed by Governor Walker.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there further comments or questions? Counselor Bender?
Yes, I, I think this should be read.
Want to read the entire resolution?
Resolution, it doesn't exist.
Ask the clerk to locate the resolution and read it.
The resolution is introduced by the Common Council of the City of Superior, Wisconsin, opposing provisions of the Budget Repair Bill proposed by Governor, Governor Walker. Whereas one of Wisconsin's greatest assets is the state are the public employees who work hard to provide the essential services and infrastructure essential for the people and businesses of Wisconsin to thrive. And whereas Wisconsin led the nation in giving public employees the right of collective bargaining, and the nation's largest public employee union, the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSME, was founded in Madison in 1936. And whereas in 1959, Wisconsin passed the nation's first comprehensive public employee bargaining law, Section 111.70, which provided the right of collective bargaining to public employees and required municipalities, school districts, the university system, and other public entities to bargain with unionized employees. And whereas skilled public employees and proactive employee unions are instrikted to the Wisconsin tradition of innovation and progressive public service, and have been instrumental in the provision of quality public services for residents and businesses in the City of Superior community. And whereas good faith public sector collective bargaining is critical for the long-term delivery of innovative and cost-effective public services. And whereas the City of Superior has experienced a long history of productive relationships with our public employees and our public unions. And whereas the state budget adjustment legislation, legislation proposed by Governor Walker would prohibit any local government, governmental unit from collectively bargaining with its employees except for public safety employees, and the collective bargaining rights under current law would be effectively retained for public employees, public safety employees only. And whereas with 2,654 public sector employees in Douglas County, the estimated cuts in take-home pay from the Budget Repair Bill would be $3,111, or a net loss of over $8 million to our local workers and economy. And whereas prohibiting the provisions of current law regarding collection of union dues and certification of unions would assist neither the state of Wisconsin nor the city in, the City of Superior in addressing the current or future budget challenges. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Superior Common Council hereby requests that the Wisconsin State Legislature, legislator, legislator, sorry, delete the provisions of the fiscal repair bill currently being considered pertaining to collective bargaining and employment relations that would prohibit public employee collective bargaining, including the sections of the proposed legislation related, relating to present, represented employees' classification, prohibited subjects of bargaining, annual bargaining unit certification requirements, union due, union dues provisions, changes to interest arbitration under MIRA, and limitations on the terms of labor agreement, and that said items be given separate consideration with public hearings, legislative committee markup, and deliberation in each House of the legislature. Be it therefore resolved that the City of Superior stands in solidarity with the hard-working men and women of the public sector, and thanks them for their invaluable contribution to our community.
We've all heard the resolution. I would beg the council's indulgence before we vote on that, just for a moment. I would like to relate some of the experiences I had yesterday. Yesterday afternoon, I was denied access to the terminal building at the Bong Airport in Superior by the Superior Police Captain and a State Patrol Officer. The patrol officer did go inside and ask why. He informed me that the governor's security detail would not permit access. As a local elected official, I was outraged that not only was I denied access, but also because the citizens of Superior were not allowed into a public building. Other people, including non-residents, were permitted into the building because they were members of the press. If Governor Walker wanted to hold a private meeting with the press, he should have done so in one of the private- so in one of the private hangars or in any other private building near the airport. I think, I'd like to have that on the record. Counselor Bender?
Yes, I just wanted to remind, I was the first one denied access to there, because I got there first, and I was told that I was not welcome. It was only for members of the press. And I had a question, and my wife brought up the same question. I wonder how much it costs to fly around the state and do those private press briefings? I wonder how much money could have been saved by not doing that? That's just my two cents worth.
Counselor Merzick?
Thank you. I'm just going to point out one more time, take this opportunity to remind everybody that this resolution is very important to show solidarity, although we need to remember that this resolution is lip service. And again, it's very easy to say, you know, we're all for union rights and human rights, and we're against this bill that Governor Walker has proposed. It's very easy to say that. It's a whole nother issue entirely to put action to those words. And so to step back a moment, the proposal that, number 9.1, is action to these words. Thank you.
No further comments. Counselor Henry?
Yeah, I just wondered if it would be appropriate for the statement that you read about your being denied access to speak to the governor or participate in the meeting, if that would be appropriate to send that to someone downstate, you know, our representative or senators, or the governor's office, or something of that nature?
I think the information's already been shared with, at least I know our state senator made a comment about it on the public radio this morning.
So you're satisfied with that?
I'm satisfied that he knew, he was aware. If no further comments or questions, we'll call for the vote on the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Didn't think there'd be any. Thank you very much. Motion's passed.
Item 12 is business by public.
We have one individual, Marty Curtis, has signed up to speak.
Marty Curtis, 5301 East First Street. I'd just like to comment, the problem you guys are discussing now was quite a bit bigger than the problem I have, but I believe you have created a solution for me. So, and I did hand out a piece of paper that was in order to correct by the fire department, and I just want to quickly point out one part, and it says, "The owner of any building constructed after July 1st, 2004, shall install a Knox box," and then it goes on to give a little directions. And the problem a lot of landlords and businesses have is it says, "If your building was constructed after 2004." Well, we all got old buildings. There's a lot of problems in this area with the Knox box, and there's quite a bit of issues with both the fire chief and the city attorney pushing people to get these Knox boxes up in the next 30 days. So what I would ask of you guys is if one of you could refer this, because you've already magically made a council meeting on Friday, and could just refer this to that council meeting, and grant some kind of an extension, perhaps change the date of the ordinance until after such time that this has got resolved at the meeting on the 15th.
Excuse me, Marty, not to argue with you, but it's been referred to the Committee of the Whole, and that committee of the Whole will be held in two weeks following the regular council meeting.
Did I say council meeting?
You said council meeting. The Committee of the Whole is what it has been referred to.
I'm sorry, you're correct. And so, yeah, that's all I'm asking, is that you could perhaps, one of the counselors put this on the agenda, and however you want to do it, but just stop all fines until after this has been resolved, and perhaps give people another 30 days after that, if the ordinance is still in effect.
Your motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? Anyone opposed can say.